We're on air. Good evening. I'm gonna bring the meeting to order. August 27, 2024, Celine County Planning and Zoning Commission.
September.
That's right. How come mine says August?
Cause you're looking at this side of it.
Flip the page.
Turn it over.
Okay, fast forward. Now we're gonna do the September meeting. That August one was so darn good.
One to repeat it.
I've got so much done.
I was, yeah, I was just reading through. Okay, yeah, let's do the September meeting. August is fun. And the first thing, we failed to introduce someone last month. Number turn it over to the chief.
Yes, I'm, I would like to introduce our newest employee. It's Janelle Timison. She is going to be our assistant now and replacing our predecessor. And the, welcome her. And she's, she's been here for, with the county for a little bit.
With the county for two years.
Two years. And she jumped ship and came onto our staff and we're happy to have her.
Hang on tight. Welcome aboard. Appreciate to have you. Okay, let's move on. First item will be the approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda for this evening's agenda, September 24th.
Second.
Twenty twenty-four.
It's been properly moved and second, we approve the agenda for the September 2024 meeting, 2024 as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes from the last meeting, August 27th, any discussion? It was quite a lengthy session. I didn't see any real.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we approve the amendments from the August 27, 2024 meeting.
I second that.
Been properly moved and second, that we approve the minutes from August 27, 2024 as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Next item is strictly just discussion on the text amendment 2401. Staff?
Yeah, this is just a continuation of the discussion involving an amendment to 13A-12 to include provisions for battery energy storage systems. Staff coordinated with the planning commission to compose the included language similar to that of the recently adopted resolution for commercial solar facilities. I regret that I didn't have a chance to really edit it very well, so you're gonna see a lot of typos in there. My main concern was making sure that I include, we included some of the things that were brought up at the last, last month's meeting. The options that you would have would be to either direct staff to make any changes to the attached language and bring back as a formal resolution for consideration at the October hearing. Option two would be the table for further evaluation and discussion of the submitted information provided by staff or make no changes to 13A-12 at this time.
Okay, discussion within the commission. How do you feel about this? Should we move forward on this?
Have we had, have we had time to read this? Have you all read this?
Yeah, bring it up for discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, just going through this, I'd like to commend those who put a lot of work into it. I think it looks pretty good. To the point that was given, there are some edits, I think just a few minor edits we need to make, but for the most part, I'm, it looks pretty good.
Anyone add anything before we open it up to public comment? And then we'll bring it back to the commission.
Okay.
Okay, I will open it up for public comment. Please come to podium, state your name, your address. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Any discussions on this item?
Dwayne Tinkler, 1701 East McReynolds Road, Osceary, Kansas. You were talking about solar, but I didn't catch it all. Were you talking about the three, three different places in your, in there where you're talking about solar?
Yeah, I was gonna, I gotta take those out.
Three of them?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all, I wanted to make sure you had it.
We have to hear from you.
Wouldn't be in the meeting with.
I know. We do appreciate it. We do appreciate your input.
Hi guys, hello, hello. So I have to also commend you. You guys did a great job at, on this draft. You caught most of it. There's obviously a few things that I'd like to see added and changed. So I went through it page by page and under the National Electric Code, under C.
What page are you on?
What page?
We'll follow you.
Page one? I'm not sure. I, I printed it out.
Oh, you got this printed, okay.
Yeah.
Page one?
Okay.
Under C, where it says National Electric Code?
Actually, page eight, eight of 29.
Our page eight.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, eight of 29.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so if you look in the Department of Energy's suggested regs, under codes, standards, and regulations, there is quite a few more NFPA's that we, I think we need to take a look at. Seventy, sixty-eight, seventy, I guess you guys reference, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy-two, eight fifty-five, you've got read, referenced several places. The International Fire Code for the battery cells, they reference UL 1642, UL seventeen, nineteen seventy-three, excuse me. Battery system ninety-five forty, and I think you have that in there someplace.
Yeah. It's E.
Under E on that same page, page eight, our page eight.
Yes.
Right, right, okay, so, so you have that one. But I think there's some other codes here under the Department of Energy 1.3 that I think we need to take a look at adding. There are National Electric Codes, Standard of Explosion Protection and Deflagration Venting. That would be a suggestion I would make.
You wanna go back through those and tell us each one, what, why?
Why I, why I think that? Yeah, I was, I was just worried about my five minutes.
And we know who you are, but for the record, you did not state your name.
Oh, you're correct. Teresa Swisher, 48, 53, East McReynolds Road. You're correct, sorry about that.
Cause you listed several.
I wrote down sixty-eight, sixty-nine, and seventy-two. And that was where we started.
Quickly, quickly, what those go for?
So sixty-eight is a standard on explosion protection. And sixty-nine is a standard on explosion prevention systems. Seventy-two is the National Fire Alarm and Signaling Codes.
Okay.
And I know you guys touch on alarms and signaling, but I, I really feel like that is a big thing for us that live in that community. Obviously, there's, there's a possibility that we could have several battery energy storage systems throughout Celine County, but the one that I know everybody's looking at now is in my backyard. And if something goes on, I wanna know there's an alarm that I'm gonna know something's going on there.
That's a good point.
That's important to me.
Yeah.
And you, you mentioned something about Department of Energy 1.3, what was that?
Yeah, that, I sent you guys all the Department of Energy checklist, proposed checklist. It's in there, 1.3.
Okay.
And, and there's some others too, that I think we could maybe take a look at.
Okay.
Bear with me. So, under I for setbacks.
Okay.
I don't know. It is on.
What page are you on?
Under standards?
Standards?
Standards, which is twelve, seventeen oh five.
Okay.
Under I. I one.
Twelve, page twelve.
Thirteen of twenty-nine.
Okay, thirteen.
So it says battery, battery energy storage systems that comply to setbacks and buffer. Do you know what the setback amount is? I didn't look it up.
The reason why we were referring to NFPA.
Because it changes.
We, exactly.
Yeah, and, and that, that's good. Okay.
Yeah.
Because I, I guess in my mind, when, when you guys refer to NFPA, if it updates in two years, then we will have the updated version.
Yeah, we'll get it.
It'll always be the latest and greatest.
Yes.
Okay. So under five, under setbacks, will there be a BERM around this? And the reason a BERM would keep the water runoff, would keep the chemicals inside if there were, were an event?
And it would also provide for a noise buffer.
Yeah, because I think noise is gonna be an issue.
We need to make that an addition.
Yeah, I think a BERM is something that we need to definitely take.
We use number two buffering or screening landscaping, but we could add in number two.
Including berms.
A BERM, okay.
Is that suitable?
Just add the word berms.
And berms, or how do you wanna do that?
I've just got, I've just, I put down including berms.
Just adding including berms?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, it's a good one, okay. We're not saying they're gonna be required.
No.
That, that could be the subject of a particular CUP.
Yeah.
Right.
A condition.
A condition.
But it's something we need to take a look at.
Not everyone will be required to have it, it'll be a discussion.
Yeah.
Good. Okay?
So then under noise, obviously.
Where are we at?
Which is M.
Okay.
Noise.
Noise, okay.
Page fifteen.
Fifteen twenty-nine.
Okay, so my question is, it, it talks about that close distances sounds caused by BERS can range from sixty to eighty decibels. Does this take into, explain to me exactly what we're doing? If, are we taking, when that thing is up and running, all those units are running, are we gonna take a noise sample of all of them running at once and it's gonna be within the sixty to eighty decibels?
What we would, what we would probably do is, because this involves like, let's say adjacent properties, we would go to the farthest property line, measure it that way and see where they're, where they're gonna be.
Okay, so if it's not between sixty and eighty, then they're going to have to address it.
Right.
Okay. But that is, that is the max.
Right.
Sixty to eighty, okay. That's what I wanted to be sure. Then groundwater testing, no, I'm good with that.
Okay.
It says within half a mile. I, I have that circled and I was thinking, do we need to go further than half a mile in water testing? But I think that's a NFPA eight fifty-five thing, so.
It's a reason why we do.
They would know. They would know. Under liability insurance, my question is, does this include if there's an extraordinary event, the cost to the landowners, the community, and the water? So, so what is their liability policy gonna include?
What page is that?
If water gets contaminated? I mean, obviously the states.
Pretty hard for us to address that.
The states gonna step in at that point.
Right.
Yeah.
That'd be something we could address.
Yeah, that's.
You know, the biggest thing I wanted to make sure was that it was tested beforehand, so we had a.
So we have something to go, go by. Exactly.
And there's no dispute. It was, it was or it was not contaminated.
Exactly. So, so a question I have on, on some other things, just in general. So all the required paperwork, like the water testing, you're gonna make them do this before they're gonna get the CUP, right?
That's the point.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and all the other different requirements?
Right.
Okay.
Nice thing about that is.
We do the same thing with cell phone towers, right? They got a brand.
They have to have it. The nice thing about it is it's all done before, they have to come to a CUP and then we have the ability to, all of us, to question it.
To move forward with it.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to be sure.
We're the last step in.
Right, in, in the.
Maze.
Right. So the last one, and I think if, if you add the codes in one, three, under additional materials.
Page twenty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
I was still looking.
Okay. Number five.
Down to the bottom.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, I, I think the, the batteries need to be compliant with UL nineteen seventy-three and the ninety-five forty.
Read that off again.
The batteries need to be compliant with UL nineteen seventy-three.
Okay.
And ninety-five forty. And that was per the Clean Energy Suggestion.
Is that addressed in any other document that's?
Well.
We're referring back to?
No, not that I know of.
Not that I knew of.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Teresa, could you repeat again? Is it nineteen seventy-three and what was the other one?
Nineteen seventy-three and ninety-five forty.
Forty. And you call that what, the UL?
UL.
UL code?
Yeah, UL code.
UL code, okay.
I think.
Pertaining to, I'm just putting some notes.
And those are pertaining to? The batteries and, and the type of batteries and, and that they have been.
The type of battery.
Yeah, that they have been quality checked and they're what they're supposed to be.
Well, we already have ninety-five forty and.
You, yeah, you've got ninety-five forty, but not nineteen seventy-three.
What's, what's in addition in nineteen seventy-three?
What page?
Nineteen seventy-three are batteries for the use in light, electric, rail applications, and stationary applications.
It's a little different than what we're doing here.
Yeah, that's a different type of application.
It's a different UL.
Okay. And I'm okay with that.
Let's scratch that, guys.
Okay.
So we've covered it? Cause we.
We've covered it already.
We talked about ninety-five forty there.
Right.
Right, and we, cause we've got that covered. Okay, so the DOE in two point two.
Thank you, Ken, for catching that.
Two point two-two, sorry, talks about severe weather. And I didn't see anything in here about addressing severe weather. And it talks about earthquake mitigation, that they need to comply with the United, the Unified Facilities Criteria, UFC, and then there's a, a number relating to foundations, soil stability, and seismic analysis. Then there's flooding and water intrusions, there's wildfire. And I didn't see anything in there either about seismic testing, since with, we've had the, the earthquakes around here. Was there anything about seismic testing in there? And I missed it?
I didn't get a hold and read because you have to pay for NF.
Yeah, NFPA eight, nine fifty-five, yeah.
But I did read a reference where those were in that eight fifty-five, so I'm waiting for eight fifty-five before we do any additional on that.
Okay, okay, so could we make a note to definitely check on the seismic?
Well, you know, I've already got the note to check on tornadoes for.
Okay, yeah, and tornadoes, I added tornadoes to this list on the Department of Energy, severe weather. Okay, then I talk, then we go into procedures for inspection and testing of associated alarms, interlocks, and controls. My question was, will the community be trained also? Will, will we be told if there is an extraordinary event, what are we supposed to do? I mean, you're gonna train the firefighters and that's definitely a, a plus, and I think you also need to include the community. And I, I'm not sure to what extent, just to make us aware that if that alarm's going off?
What is it?
What are we supposed to do?
Yeah.
You know, how, how do you shelter in place?
I guess the question would be, how would you?
How would you notify people?
Something like that. Yeah, the enforceability has to come into play with some of this too.
Yeah.
How, how enforceable is it?
Right.
Yeah.
We're gonna do our best to notify.
Yeah.
But will the emergency, I, I'm assuming that they're, they would, they will let emergency
preparedness know and then they will, they could put out a?
Well, my thought is they could probably let somebody like emergency management or something like that. And that's in here in point eleven. Yeah. Seventeen.
Cause yeah, I mean, if you've got an event that happens during the day, you've got southeast of Celine packed with kids, and, and are they gonna know what to do and to, to shelter in place and how to protect all those kids up there? I mean, that, that's a real concern for me.
Okay.
I have DOE one nine, but I'm not sure what I was talking about. Contractor, bear with me. DOE doesn't have a 1.9. I have no idea of what I was doing there.
I've got notes like that.
I, I probably was worried I wasn't gonna make my five minutes and I was trying to extend it or something, I don't know. So.
We appreciate your input, so don't worry about it.
Okay, thank you. Then the other thing, the decommissioning and all of these different testings and, and things that they have to supply in order to get the CUP are gonna be at their expense. I mean, it doesn't specifically say that all throughout, and I thought maybe we needed to make just a general statement that. Okay.
I thought I, I thought I did.
Yeah, it says that, it says that. It's.
Did I miss a few?
Well.
And when I read it, it makes, it sounds like it's covered.
Yeah, I didn't know if we needed to be as picky as saying every, every line needs to be.
There's also the testing.
I was trying to say that.
Right.
Just globally.
All of it's gonna be their responsibility to test it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe you cover that in the CUP. Other than that.
And some of the conditions that we would put on a CUP, if like, let's say, they're not gonna be starting construction for like a year or something like that, then what we would do is we would say they would have to submit everything prior to construction to staff to verify that everything is.
It makes sense.
Okay, any other comments?
I think, yeah, I, I've, I've got just one, one last. Under the DOE Engineering and Construction, which is two, I, it says details on fire suppression, smoke and fire detection, gas detection, thermal management, ventilation, exhaust, and deflagration prevention and/or venting systems if provided. That's one of the things that is required. That's what the DOE says you, you need to have. And I didn't see that, parts of it I think were in there, but not all of it.
Make sure you send that to Tim, so that we can get that.
Okay.
So I can put that in there. My memory isn't what it used to be.
Neither is mine, it used to be my notes. Okay, and then the other one was M, which is fire and explosion testing data, hazard mitigation analysis and calculations.
Now, that should be covered under the NFPA that you, that you gave us, right?
I don't know. I'm, I'm with you, I've not read NFPA.
Yeah, we're going back and forth with the same thing.
Yeah.
Keep in mind, it's the reason why I wanted everything based off NFPA, cause when they change.
Cause you've got it covered. Yeah, I agree with you there. So that is all I had.
Thank you, my dear, appreciate it.
You guys did a great job, thank you.
Appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Very much. Other comments from the community?
Hi, my name's Mark Sishley, five nine six seven, East McReynolds Road, Gypsum. Just a couple of questions, are those okay? Concerned with the draft? Okay. It said eighty decibels, is that right?
Sixty-eight, sixty-eight.
Sixty-eighty? It just made me think, I just had literally training on this at where I work and it was talking about eighty decibels hearing protection is required, especially for an eight-hour-plus shift. And I'm assuming this will be long-term, cause that will cause hearing damage over time at eighty decibels. OSHA, I think, is eighty-four, they said it a little bit less, so that just kinda came to mind here to protect, you know, surrounding areas. And I know, you know, living out there in the country, that's the beautiful thing of it, it's quiet.
Yes.
And then you start having something like that sustained over time, I'll probably go insane with repetitive noise like that, it's just kinda like, yeah, there's probably a lot of psychological studies we could go into that.
Last month, Teresa and I were, I think it was last month, Teresa and I were discussing this issue, cause you know, without these microphones, sixty decibels is you and me talking.
Yeah.
But when you get up into eighty, that's within a car, inside a car, and you're hearing the road noise. And then when you're sitting at my ranch, it's ninety, I've measured it, ninety decibels, listening to that damned interstate. And then when you're sitting at my ranch, it's ninety, I've measured it, ninety decibels, listening to that damned interstate going by.
Yeah.
And I hear it eight hours a day.
Yeah, and, yeah, sustained, yeah, exactly, that's a, an issue. Um, and so for the, the setback on that, so that comes back, it comes into setbacks, right? And I believe, was it five hundred feet?
That's what we've currently got it.
Okay, um, obviously, you know, when you look at the wording in there on page three, it says, ensure, I don't think I wrote it down, minimize impact on properties. So inherently, what that statement already says, it's going to impact those properties.
Well, all techni-, all infrastructure is going to impact technically.
Yeah, exactly, and this isn't infrastructure, though. This is, uh, um, to make money.
This will be an infrastructure.
Technically, infrastructure if it's tied to the grid.
It's, it's a buy-low, sell-high energy farm is, is what it is, otherwise it wouldn't be in, because we already have the infrastructure in place. So I would just argue that point, not like argumentatively, but, you know, and it's trying to state just, you know, based on my, uh, point of view with that. So, therefore, any properties will be impacted and therefore, they were there, you know, and now they have to, you know, would have to tolerate that. So I just want to understand that. I think that should be worded a little bit more, and then also, what is that impact? When you say minimize, that's incredibly relative, right? I mean, when you talk, that's vague, and I think any lawyer would have a, a field day with that, um, as far as what the impact to that property was.
Keep in mind, one of the things that we want is a, a noise, uh, captured, tested beforehand.
Right, to see how far that range is.
Exactly, and we're talking five hundred feet away, so you and I can be carrying a conversation. Five hundred feet away, they shouldn't be able to hear us.
Yeah, where I'm living, I can hear the football game clears.
That's different.
And, uh.
That's different.
Oh, I know, but the crowd noise and the, and the cars and the people talking, I mean, it's amazing on a calm night where you can hear.
I know.
And, and if there's, you know, any water around, anyway.
But you're, you're, it's understood, what you're saying.
Especially the same sustained part.
Keep in mind that this is a minimum and that with each CUP, there can be additions.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's the other thing too, is the size of those, and that gets into all the other burn-off and, and everything. So those are just questions I wanted to ask, just to kind of think about or consider, um, because that seems pretty like, mm, uh, iffy there too, so thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate it, thank you.
Because a lot of size is going to determine the noise level.
Yeah, a five-acre site versus a twenty-acre site.
Right.
One of the things I wanted to real quick kind of address, and I think I kind of briefly touched with you on this, was, do you want me to re, did you want to keep or remove any of the reference to the acreages?
Uh, that is a point that we'll have to discuss.
We'll come back.
Bring it back.
We'll bring it back to the commission.
Okay.
Sure, yeah, because we've got several notes here, we'll bring it back to the commission. You're up.
I have a question from a gentleman who couldn't make it tonight.
Name?
He had prior commitments.
What's your name?
My name is Brooke Swisher, I live at 6398 South Woodward Road, Assyria, Kansas.
Thank you.
His question was, it was stated in the last meeting that this was for the whole county.
Correct.
I get that. But the, out on McReynolds Road and Simpson is the motherload for power, obviously, and that's our, the concern, the first one coming. Can you tell me, um, other possible sites around the county that one of these could go in? That would be of interest, would it be specifically for Celine County? Would it be of the size that Plus Power is?
Technically, they could put it just about anywhere.
That'd be their decision to bring it.
It's a market decision.
It's a market decision. Now, most likely, they're going to want to put it next to a substation.
Right.
And there's several, there's many substations.
Right.
And then the size of what they put in at that substation is also a consideration. And then you also have the fact that NO might want to put one in, because if you're a DSNO member, then you know that, uh, they ask you, or can we turn your power off at three to six P.M. when it hits a hundred degrees? And technically, that'd be a great marketing idea for them, because they could buy the energy cheap at night and then instead of asking us to turn off our electricity from three to six, they could use the batteries.
Right.
That could then assist Celine County, but anything on the national grid, chances are, it's just going to help us as far as county taxes.
Right, okay.
Yeah, because, you know, we're kind of getting focused in on McReynolds Road.
Because it's the mother.
But we're doing the county.
Yeah.
We're, we're trying to address the entire county.
Right, the chances of it going anywhere other than that spot currently or within the year or two are slim.
If they can make it feasible, we're going to protect the county.
Right.
Yeah, keep in mind, we're interested in citing in harmony of the agricultural area, so.
And that's very important to me.
It is to us.
Top important to me also.
Right.
My personal question, can we make a specific setback for our county besides following the NFPA 855?
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure, we can make standards harder, but not softer.
Right, can we go half a mile from any resident?
It'll be a discussion within us.
We'd have to determine it as a.
Why a half mile?
That was just a number I threw out.
Yeah, I mean.
The risks to, to somebody within 2.5 miles are pretty high if a catastrophic event happened with one of those.
If it did, and I was discussing earlier with a, a friend of mine, that, you know, when you start looking at the technology and the information that's coming out, this, this stuff is changing on a monthly basis.
Yes, it is.
And they are advancing so quickly, and, uh, I don't remember the specifics, but there's only been like two or three fires in the last year.
Right.
And so the, the, the precedence of, of, of having a fire on these systems or is decreasing dramatically. So, with that thought in mind.
Some that happened recently.
With that thought in mind, you know, you have to sit there and balance, you know, NFPA has researched all of this and set the guidelines based on the research that they've been working on for decades.
Right.
And specifically, the last decade. So, our premise is, let's use those national guidelines as some, if it changes nationally, then we don't have to touch this document. They have to go back to that national document and make adjustments. That's what we were hoping to be able to do.
Right.
Are you thinking of the increased setback for noise?
Yeah. For noise and risk, noise mainly, because.
Mainly noise.
The, there's a house right across the road from the proposed huge commercial site.
Right.
And they have kids, they're a family. Long-term, what's that going to do? That's my concern for them.
Yes.
And they're not here to speak for themselves, they work nights, so.
That is something we do need to look at.
Sure.
Because, um, is five hundred feet enough?
Yeah.
Because right now, five hundred feet is not just across the road, they're going to have to move it.
Yeah.
It'd be interesting to see some reports of what is the sound level at five hundred feet versus one thousand feet versus fifteen hundred feet.
Yeah.
Are we changing much?
And on what size of operation?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they, I read a study today that it was 1.2 miles away and it was sixty to eighty.
I haven't seen that yet.
We haven't seen that.
But like I say, that's something we could.
Some of the information.
We could still discuss.
Yeah, it's still something we need to look into.
Yeah, that's, those are my concerns.
How fast does that noise level drop off?
Yeah.
With distance?
And during the testing, like during their required testing of the noise levels around the area, at what times are they going to test this? Are they going to test it in the peak of summer when those air conditioners are running to keep it cool? Timing.
Timing's.
Is, is important.
So we should set it on August fifteenth, you have to test.
Exactly. Or the whole month of August.
Four in the afternoon.
At four in the afternoon.
And notify her.
And let her know what it is.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I got.
That's good comments, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Very good. Yeah, I could sure discuss increasing setbacks real easy.
I could too, I mean, I have no problems with it, but the thing is, that bothers me is, I haven't read NFPA 855. I'm still waiting on that.
Any other public comment? First one, the podium wins.
Joshua Swati here, on behalf of the Advanced Power Alliance, just a couple of things I want to point out about battery storage in general. You are very smart, uh, to build countywide regulations, because, uh, these are, uh, going to be important parts of the grid, not just the national grid, but the local grid. And I will point out, there is, uh, the closest battery storage operating, uh, anywhere near Celine County is actually in Minneapolis. It was installed by the municipal utility there, uh, to the point made about DSNO. It has allowed them consistently now for the last two summers, uh, to avoid having to use their, uh, dual-fuel diesel generator in those hottest days, which is both expensive for them to run, and then it's also very expensive from a regulatory perspective. So that battery's been great. The other thing to point out about that, though, is that battery is located inside the city of Minneapolis. And so, as you consider setbacks, uh, obviously, you do need to make sure that, uh, these are appropriately sited, and this is a larger facility, obviously, than the one in Minneapolis. Uh, nevertheless, anytime you talk about setbacks, it becomes the push-pull of, of probably the people that would prefer that no project is there, which at that point, there's no setback that's far enough, uh, versus what is reasonable and what is based on, on, uh, both national standards and then what's reasonable for Celine County. And so, I would like to keep that in mind, and then I have made this, um, invitation to anyone else. Uh, I, I would be able to secure a visit if anyone else ever interested in seeing the battery facility in Minneapolis. There's not a whole lot to look at, uh, it's just a battery facility. They dedicated it on December fifteenth, on the day it was ninety mile-an-hour straight-line winds for nine hours, so not a whole lot of people showed up for that ribbon-cutting, uh, but it's been a great facility for their community. And I think you will see many more of these, so it's smart of the county to get out ahead of it.
But before you leave.
Don't leave, don't leave.
All right.
You're up.
I'm up.
I will assume you have read NFPA 855.
That is an incorrect assumption, I have seen portions of it.
So you do not know the setbacks that are in NFPA?
So, no, I, I certainly cannot speak.
Jeez.
There may be some people here from Plus Power, I don't want to put them on the spot, they're probably more familiar with what NFPA says for setbacks than I am. And I, I'm going to turn around and they're going to look at me and say, why did you say that? But, uh, no, I don't know what the NFPA.
Okay, I was hoping you did.
Certainly could find out and can convey those to Tim, um, as soon as possible if, if somebody else doesn't.
That's the only thing I'm waiting on to finalize this.
Okay.
And my question is, do you have any ideas on the noise level, how it would drop off from five hundred feet to a thousand feet to fifteen hundred feet? Do you have any insight on that?
Let's be a little bit more specific on that. Let's start with the Minneapolis, because that cannot be a very large battery site.
No, it's four megawatts, so it is substantially smaller.
And so, the noise level?
I, I can't even begin to tell you, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, I will say this.
Will it change much from five hundred to a thousand, fifteen hundred?
Uh, uh, a couple of things, I am not a sound expert, so anything I say.
Guess what, we're not either.
Yeah, it should be, it should be taken with a grain of salt.
But you've been next to one and you've heard it.
Uh, that being said, I have been on multiple panels with, with what is some, you know, some people consider the sort of world sound expert from a wind perspective, not a battery perspective, but a wind perspective. But it is, uh, generally the same technology and science behind sort of twenty-four-hour ambient noise, or in this case, it's not twenty-four-hour noise, uh, it's intermittent noise, but it's steady intermittent noise when it's going.
Okay.
Uh, and I will say that, um, sound always fluctuates. Uh, to the gentleman that spoke earlier about, uh, hearing things from southeast of Celine at particular games, there are nights, uh, wind, it is very still and sound can be greater, and that's true of wind turbines. It would probably be true of battery storage, it's probably true of the games at southeast of Celine. Uh, there are nights when the wind is blowing a particular direction, uh, and it is going to be louder. If you are up from I-70, it is substantially louder than if your house happens to be lower than I-70. Uh, and in the middle of the summer, if the corn is high, obviously, the sound is going to be substantially different. I would argue almost negligible, um, you know, if you're at full season growth on, on a crop around there. And so, uh, it's difficult to say that's why you set a, a, um, maximum standard that cannot be exceeded. Uh, and again, I would go back to if there's a national standard that's associated with setbacks in general, that are then associated with that sound, um, that is probably good enough.
Okay.
The only last thing I'd say, people ask me all the time, you know, would you want to live close to these wind turbines? Would you want to live close to these battery storage facilities? That also can have an impact on, on, you know, your interest in ambient noise. And so, it, these are difficult things to precisely measure, um, uh, with instrumentation. Uh, but, but, you know, you have to go back to what sort of the national standards are.
Uh, one final question before you leave.
Yeah.
Uh, I meant to ask you this some time ago, but where is the battery storage facility in Minneapolis? I'd like to drive by there tomorrow.
I, I believe it's on the south side of town, uh, that's another thing that I can get to any of you. Uh, I actually just texted the expert that I know, my wife, and said, where's the battery storage facility? She said, in town, I said, I need more than in town. So hopefully, by the end of the meeting, I can get information.
I'd like to be able to actually know that's what it was.
You can go right by and, and get fairly close to it, I think, so.
Thanks.
Other comment from the public?
Daniel Brennan from Plus Power, I'd be happy to just, uh, address the question that Mr. Fennell had about the, uh, the setbacks under NFPA 855. So, 855 has different setbacks, depending on the type of system that you're building. If you're building what is considered a remote location, the setbacks are required to be a hundred feet. If it's not deemed to be a remote location, it's less than that, and goes down to fifty feet. But the NFPA has different setbacks based on the different types of systems. But one thing to remember is that you don't need to make a decision right now what the setbacks are going to be required for any particular application. You don't have the application in front of you, you can always make a, a condition of the approval of your CUP that the project comply with certain setbacks. So you can take a look at the application that's being proposed, and you can say, what would be reasonable here? What makes sense based on the context, the size of the system, the neighbors around it? Um, frankly, I think it's too early to say exactly what setbacks you want to require for a project that hasn't yet been proposed.
You know, that's a really good point, I'm glad you brought it up, because that's one of the reasons why we put in the NFPA, A-55 in here, has the document to go to. And you're correct, if we don't like it on a particular CUP, we can adjust it then.
Sure.
Thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome, I, I think that that's a, that's a good standard to include in your code, and, um, some of you probably met me about a year ago when I appeared before you for the first time, um, seeking a CUP for Plus Power's Mountain Peak Project. And at the time, you know, I, I'll, I'll admit, we, we put you in a very difficult spot, because your code didn't even contemplate battery energy storage. We were just coming in under one of the, um, existing uses in the code. And so you were being asked to make a determination on, on, on a very important project without legal standards that specifically went to the specifics of a battery storage system. And now what you've done is you've adopted or you're proposing comprehensive regulations that will allow you to properly and carefully evaluate the project when it's in front of you. So, the, the difficulties that this board had with the application last fall, uh, will not happen again, because you're going to have specific standards that you can follow, specific criteria that you can consider in judging whether or not you want to approve a CUP. And so, I'd say you, you, uh, you second the comments that you've done a really good job, and that you've done your diligence, you've done what the research, uh, and had the discussion that needs to be had in order to adopt this amendment, and then consider the project once the amendment has been adopted and the application is in front of you, because it's not yet. And we can't, we can't prepare our application, our new application under this, uh, new, new statute until you've recommended it and the county commissions adopted it. So we, we'd ask that, that you go ahead and do that and, um, and then consider the application once you get it.
Don't sit down, any other questions for him?
One question I'll throw out, okay, the proposed site you were talking about, where do noise levels fit in with the setback that you were talking there? To fall into the sixty to eighty, what would your setback have to be to fall into that?
That, that's a good question.
It's a dang good question.
Yeah, I, I believe that last year, when we put in that application, we had a noise study that, that measured specifically what the decibel levels were going to be at certain points away from the, the property line. the property line. Don't remember off the top of my head.
Just roughly, what would it take?
I believe it's within that range that you mentioned, but if you adopt this standard, we will make sure to design a system that complies with it. And we'll do that, because if we don't, you'll deny our application. Because the law that you're proposing now requires us to establish for you at the application stage that we can comply with those noise standards. So we will have to do that to your satisfaction, and if we don't, I would assume that you would deny that application. So if you adopt this amendment...
Back to my question. What would the setback have to be to get it within the 60 to 80?
I can't answer that.
With the size of the facility you were talking, would 500 cover it? Would it take 1,500? We're just talking.
I believe it would be...
Before you build the wall and all that stuff?
I believe it would be less than that. My memory of...
Less than 500?
Correct. My memory of our prior application is that we produced a sound study that demonstrated that the decibel levels would be well below the range that you just cited. But I don't have that document in front of me, so I don't want to...
It's a topic of discussion.
Correct, correct. But for the zoning amendment that's before you now, I would encourage you to adopt that as a regulation and a criteria that you can consider in reviewing an application, so that you could then make that a condition of approval. We want the sound level, the applicant to establish the sound level will be between 68, whatever it is that you deem to be appropriate. And then we'll have to comply with that, or we won't be able to build the project.
Exactly. The setback will be based upon what it takes to get to that level. Right?
Yeah, that's what he's saying.
We're setting 60 to 80 first, and then you tell me what you're going to have to do to get to that.
Right. So I think now I understand what you're getting at, but it's not just the setback that would determine how loud it's going to be off of the property, and therefore how big of a setback you would need. There are other elements of the design that will impact how much you're going to be able to hear the system from the property line. And so it might be that we can, we have a larger setback, but it also might be that we adjust the fan speeds. It might be that we design it in a way that will reduce the sound. And so I don't want to say you have to impose a large setback in order to get a quiet system. There's other ways to do that.
Because I like that. The setback will be based upon, once you meet this criteria, you're going to set your own setback.
Basically.
Basically.
I think that's...
You're going to have to meet this criteria first.
The noise level, right. And demonstrate it to the board in advance before the system is built, based on a noise study by an independent expert.
Right. It may take 1,500 feet to get your facility...
Or it may take a wall.
Or...
Trees.
Right.
Nothing.
Right.
Or nothing.
Yeah, so when we talk about setbacks, I'm thinking, that's kind of a, you prove to me what it's going to take.
Sure.
But there's so much in design that you got to take into...
Yeah, your design will help us with the setback rule.
That's right.
Good, good. And yes, we remember what we went through last time.
I'm sure you do.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, great information.
Any other public comment? Sure.
Mike Jensen, 5694 East K-4 Highway, Gypsum. And one of the things you guys have not really addressed, but as a property owner near where they're proposing, is this facility more likely is going to take and devalue property, especially housing property. We need to have a much further setback for housing and things. It's not fair to people who are living around there to have their property devalued so they can make a profit. I think we need to be looking at more like a mile setback, like we did with the solar thing, so that we're not affecting people's property values. You're affecting lives when you're affecting property values. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Any other comments from the public? I'll bring it back to the commission. Where do you want to go? Staff?
So just to kind of go over what the, what your options were again, option one would be to just direct me to go ahead and put together a finalized resolution for your consideration at the October meeting, or just go ahead and, again, do a continuation or table it for some further discussion amongst the board themselves to give you time to kind of digest what was gone over.
Do you want to highlight some of the things that we would like to address?
Well, I mean, it's just based on what the discussion that you've had today, this evening.
I do think we need to post it up for public review way before the meeting.
So you want me to go ahead and, is that saying you want option one, which is just for me to go ahead and put together a resolution for your consideration?
With all the edits that every one of us has come up with.
With all the edits, yeah, okay. Let me go over, I want to make sure...
Yeah, run through.
Make sure I've got all the edits here.
Just got my page number. Okay. And there are 18, 8F. Got a reference to solar arrays and panels. Can you just delete?
Yeah.
Good catch.
Yeah.
And then on 9.2, that one's not applicable as well, that, the one sentence, the side area is measured with the modules as horizontal as possible.
Nine.
Number two.
Two, side area.
Yeah, side area is measured. And then right below that, on one, that solar energy conversion system is the end of the paragraph.
What page are you on?
Nine.
Nine at 20.
I'm trying to find your solar comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on... It's on, where's this paragraph, the large...
Oh, with solar, right at the end of the sentence.
Yeah, wildlife corridors.
Okay.
It's the...
Wildlife corridors and other corresponding battery energy loads.
Yeah, the very last, second to the last line at the end, solar energy conversion systems. Or other features before it says. If you look at the last line where it says, "or other features," right before that, it says solar energy conversion.
Is this number three?
No, on one.
On one.
On the big one, wildlife corridors.
Okay, wildlife corridors, okay. I got you. All right.
And the other one was on page 16.
Stop at page 13. That we wanted to put in, including burms.
Yeah, I got that in there.
You got that one?
Okay. Page 13 was the next step I had. Then 15, we're talking about the decibel level.
Yeah.
No change in that whatsoever.
Yeah, it's 60.
Then you're going on to 16?
Yeah, 16T.
Okay.
You've got LSES and CSES.
Yeah.
Dang it.
On T.
Right.
And then on the following, next page, under U, you've got the height of solar panels, second to last line.
Height of solar panels.
And then on the bottom of the page, under Z, the reviews.
Solar facility. Good.
And the next one I had was on page 20. On four, on page 20, solar farm. And also on six.
Solar. So just deleting four and deleting six.
Yeah, the solar farm there. And then on D1, CSES again.
CES.
BES.
Yep. And then on two, it has solar panels again.
So do we just delete one and two?
I think so, yeah.
Just delete one and two.
And then on page 23...
Let's go back to what you just said.
I don't think we want to delete the whole paragraph.
You don't want to delete one and two.
Delete one and two.
You just want to change the CES.
Just the CES.
Because you still want public outreach is required.
Yeah, you still want public input.
But you don't want to say for solar energy systems.
Okay, gotcha. So we're not deleting the whole paragraph?
No.
We're just deleting words.
Just the words, yep. Or replacing them with...
But up above four and six, we're deleting the entire?
Um, I don't think so.
No.
No. I think you just want to change it. Change it to BES.
Just leave words, okay.
Yeah.
I'm with you.
Yep. And then on page 23, A, you have solar facilities, again, just replace it with battery storage.
Gotcha. Just changing the wording.
Yep. And then same for 15, where it says solar installation, under extraordinary event.
I see.
And then on page 24, under 18, decommissioning of battery storage to the solar panels.
Okay.
And on 18I also?
Yeah, 18I, I think that whole line can go. Or do we want to have... Because they're not producing, they're not producing anything.
Technically, they are.
Yeah, we're not generating power with a battery storage system.
Yeah, it's not a production level.
18I.
Yeah, 18I, I think that one.
Okay, I can go with it.
And then my next one's on 26, 9, IX. It, again, replace decommissioning of battery storage.
Yeah.
That was all mine. I'm done.
Glad you guys caught this. I sent this to him right before I went to Alaska.
And the, and I'm going to include also what Teresa mentioned about the additional documents for, okay, I got them in there too. Okay, I appreciate it.
Do we want to make any statement of setback requirement will be based upon, we're not going to put a word in there of...
I would prefer not to. I would prefer to keep it the way we've got it with NFPA.
And that's part of the CUP.
And let the national standards set that. And then if we feel it needs to be more restrictive, then we will do so under a CUP.
Stay with the 500 feet, but they already got to meet the decibels. Okay, gotcha. So you don't want to tie the two together in a sentence.
Look, I don't want to keep changing this document. I'd let NFPA change.
But I mean, that was a great comment, that the decibels come first before setback.
Ken, I had a quick question for you. On page 23, you mentioned number 15. Where was that, that you saw the, because that's, I got everything but the...
15, under emergency services, where it says extraordinary event at the solar installation. Just change that to battery.
Oh, okay.
At the battery installation.
Good job.
I must do search replace on solar.
Yeah, I was going to say, just do a Ctrl-F on solar.
Yep.
Yeah, right. But I did enough that makes sense.
Okay, bring me a motion. Bring me a motion.
Well, let's keep discussing this. One of the things that we need to discuss is the acres. We've got it set at 20 acres. Do you guys want the 20-acre size battery, or do you want it 10 acres? Do you want 11 acres? Do you want to leave it at 20 and then just let the CUP ride?
Well, I think, because we, the text we were referring was more to solar panels, which cover a lot more acreage.
Well, see, I stripped all that. But I did leave... They need to have an acreage restriction anyway.
The...
Let them come with what whoever wants, and we can make the decision based on that.
Now, it's 20 acres in a section versus 20 acres in a housing area.
I don't know that they're...
Well, and that, that'd be also affecting sound.
Yeah.
So in order to keep the sound down, that's going to also do the acreage.
So your point is? I don't think there needs to be.
My point is, we don't really need to put a limit on it.
That's the reason why I wanted to discuss this, because if we don't need it, let's remove it.
Section? Where's that at? What page, what section?
You had to ask. Hey, do a search on this and find 20 acres.
Yeah, because the difference between solar and this is two different acreages.
That's true.
I'm seeing a page 12, guys.
Thank you.
Size. BES side area should be limited to 20 acres.
Yeah, so just go ahead and take that out?
Yeah.
Scratch it?
Scratch E.
Scratch it.
Okay, now...
Next. Now can I have a motion? Where do you want to go with this? Direct staff, make a motion, table it?
Well, before we make a motion, my comment is, I would like to have staff go ahead and clean this document up, prepare it for public, and then we can come back next month and finalize it.
I like that. I think it needs to be in final form for public review.
Right.
So bring me a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we direct staff to finalize 2401, based on our input and the corrections identified in the input from the public, and publish it prior to the meeting so that we can review it in her final form.
Second.
Thank you. It has been properly moved and seconded that we forward staff to put this into a final form for discussion and public review. Any other changes to the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Staff?
I have one quick thing under staff announcements. I got a question from an individual, and I said I would try to get a clarification from the board on this. The individual has property that is currently zoned agricultural, and it is south of a lot that is zoned industrial, and they want to put a billboard up on this property, it's about 30 acres, and it's going to be right up next to the road. And my question was, he wanted to know if, do they, can they, there's already billboard up there, further up north, but he wants to know if he needs an easement for that, or should he rezone the whole parcel, just for that one?
Well, what's our sign ordinance say about the size of the sign? We already have a sign ordinance.
We have a code just for billboards.
Right.
Right. And it mentions, it mentions industrial zones, you know, and is where they're permitted. And so, and so would he just do a little easement that is zoned industrial? He would have him zoned at industrial to put the, or would he have to do the whole acreage? That's the only question that I had.
Well, they've done along the interstate. My gosh, there's all kinds of billboards along, every county's got billboards along the interstate.
Okay.
On ag land.
And a few, and a few on the other US highways and stuff, but, I mean, we should have President on that.
Should be able to follow. Because I can't remember if there's anything in the acreage requirement for a sign.
Not an acreage requirement. I think it just has to do with whether it's what district it's in. And I know that, you know, aggregate, you know, there's already one there, actually, that they're wanting to replace. And I said, "Well, if you replace it in that ag zone, we may have to have you just do a little strip that's along that roadway or rezone the whole thing." I don't know, and that's what I wanted to get.
Well, we got a sign ordinance already in place, so let's tear it apart and see where we can make it fit.
Bring it back to us next month with the sign ordinance.
They're just replacing one that's already there.
Yeah, it's in an ag district, and they wanted to replace it, so I don't have an, I personally wouldn't have an issue with it, you know, if it's, you know, I could just say it's grandfathered in, but I just, I don't want to open up a can of worms if I